The clerk can take the roll, please. Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
First item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
There a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded for their discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Next, we have a review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the approval of our minutes from our May 10th County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner Schulte. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And there is nothing under chairs removed today, so we will move directly into committee reports. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine is all informational. That concludes my report.
Right, thank you. That's quick. Transportation Committee Report, Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report is not all informational. I have, we met on May 16th at 9:00 a.m. And we have some action items under Highway. The first is the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of Wright of Way for the Signal Reconstruction at East River Road and Mississippi Street in the city of Ridley.
Moved.
Is there, okay, so offered a resolution? Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordiak. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just point out that in the original write-up on this, it was listed as the incorrect resolution number. A correction has been made. It is actually Resolution 2016TR1.
1-1.
1-1, 2-1-0.
Oh, 1-1, okay.
As opposed to 1-6.
Okay.
Listed originally.
Perfect. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval to enter into a license agreement with the Metropolitan Council, allowing bar engineering to temporarily place monitoring equipment on the Coon Rapids Boulevard Bridge Structure at the railroad crossing southeast of East River Road and Coon Rapids Boulevard interchange. The monitoring is to gather baseline data and evaluate system performance prior to tunneling for the North Area Interceptor Rehabilitation Project.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval of a purchase of service agreement with Braun Intertech for a geotechnical evaluation associated with the realignment of Freeway Drive and the partial reconstruction of Lake Drive in the city of Columbus.
I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval of a purchase of service agreement with Bolton and Mank Consulting Services to provide construction inspection service for the county-wide overlay program in an amount not to exceed $95,420.
A motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval of a purchase of service agreement with SRF Consulting Group to provide construction inspection services for the Bridge Street Roundabout Project in the city of St. Francis in an amount not to exceed $84,517.40.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just to make a point on these last two items, these are basically subcontracting jobs that we would normally do in-house if we had enough available personnel. We've got major projects going on around the county, and so these are just contracts we're bringing in from the outside to augment our services.
Thank you, I appreciate you pointing that out. I think we have probably one of the larger seasons this year, and that's a good thing. I know it's difficult for the traveling public, and we appreciate your patience, but appreciate the good work of our staff who have been able to help bring additional grants and resources in for these projects.
Madam Chair, if I could just follow up and just say that it's one of the, one of the costs of running a very lean and efficient shop is you don't bring on new personnel for this one busy season, and then wonder what you do with them in the next two or three seasons when it's not as busy. You subcontract this out and bring in very qualified people that you've worked with in the past, so I think this is a great benefit for both the private industry and for our Anoka County citizens.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Magellan Pipeline for relocating their pipeline within the roundabout construction, the intersections of County State Aid Highway 12 and County Road 53 in the cities of Lionel Lakes and Blaine.
I'll move it.
Second? Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to comment on the funding. Because it's partially an easement and partially not, we are going to be 50/50 with this organization. It's not always the case.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Madam Chair, I would comment that that estimated cost to Anoka County is $165,600.
Okay. And a roll call vote. Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval to award a contract to New Look Construction Incorporated based on their low bid of $1,112,961 for the Batuminus Trail median barrier and ADA improvements in the vicinity of the Trunk Highway 10 and Far Oak Avenue in the city of Anoka.
Is there a motion to approve?
I will move it.
There's a, it's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Again, this is a project in our Greater Minnesota Gateway Project. This is part of it. It's pedestrian safety improvements. It's a necessary project. This is our most unsafe section of roadway for pedestrians in Anoka County. This gets us that much closer to a safe road for the public.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval to award a contract to C.S. McCrossan based on their low bid of $1,680,991.47 for the construction of a roundabout at the intersections of County State Aid Highway 12 and County Road 53 in the cities of Blaine and Lionel Lakes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
I would consider approval for the final plat of Betker Farm Preserve 5th Edition. On May 16th, Transportation Committee approved the preliminary plat of Betker Farm Preserve 5th Edition located in Section 29, Township 34, Range 22, Linwood Township. Dirt Works is the owner and developer. This plat meets all township recommendations and ordinances and has been approved in its final form by the township of Linwood. All recommendations and applicable Anoka County ordinances in effect have been complied with.
I will, approval is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Now, Madam Chair, there are a couple informational items there. One, I will, I will call out that we have a bus service that services the Riverdale area, and we're being asked by a private developer to, a private owner, to no longer move through their parking lot. That's the Cub Foods at Riverdale, the Walmart at Riverdale. And the public should be aware that those businesses have asked us not to run our bus service there anymore. We're looking at options for maybe getting in the vicinity without actually traveling on their property. Hopefully, that can come to fruition. We have some more research to do to figure out how we can work through that with the redevelopment of North Street, which runs adjacent to those properties.
And I think, just for clarification, I think it's actually the owner of the mall that has asked us not to run it, so don't want to call out those businesses, but the owner of the actual mall has asked us not to.
That's correct. Yes, and with that clarification, I think the act, some of the businesses there for sure, both Cub and Walmart, love that bus service through there, but may not have the leverage with the building ownership. So at any rate, that's, so the public's aware, if suddenly you see a change in that bus line, I believe it's, is it 860, 805?
805.
But Route 805, as it runs through there, if you see that change, it's not something propagated at the county level or even at the Met Council level. This is something that the building owner has made a decision, and we will work with them as best we can to provide some service in the area, but that was really the best route. We'll work from there going forward. With that, there's a couple other information items you can look at your leisure, and that does conclude my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schulte. Now we'll move on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on May 17th, came away with four action items. The first of which is the committee recommends the county board approve contract C-005012 with Rogers Auto Body for vehicle body repair services, and this is a one-year contract with four additional years of renewal.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The next item is the committee recommends the county board approve the renewal of contract C-00865F with Borderlines Pavement Maintenance for countywide snow removal services, and this is, as you can see, this is a contract with additional renewals, and so far, they've done a fantastic job for the county, and we want to continue working with them.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The next item is the committee recommends the county board approve contract C-005010 with McPhillips Brothers Roofing for the completion of the Lionel Lakes School Building roof in an amount not to exceed $159,970. This is an unusual building in that the center of the roof is kind of a cutout and dropped in and somewhat of a bathtub, and, and it's been an ongoing issue with, as far as design goes, in order to keep water from getting inside the building, and so this is a, while it's, you know, I think a little more expensive to do this roofing project, I think it's necessary based on the amount of work that has to be done to seal it all up.
Okay, I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The final item is the committee recommends the county board approve contract C-004992 with Schumacher Elevator for Phase 7. This is the final phase of the elevator modernization projects in an amount not to exceed $474,965. This is, this is good. This is the final phase. Seven phases at roughly half a million dollars each is significant in terms of the investment the counties had to make into the elevators based on state code changes and mandates. And, and so as we plan for these and tried to manage the, these costs every single year, it is exciting to come to the end of this. Now, we do have a couple of, three elevators, Wargo Nature Center is one of them where there's some minor repairs we have to do. That'll be ongoing, obviously, with all these elevators, but as far as the major upgrades go, this is, this is calling it an end, so, we hope, for a while at least, Madam Chair.
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schulte.
I would just concur with Commissioner Look and then just add on that it did shave one phase off. I believe we originally had an eight-phase project. We do, by squishing it all into this year into Phase 7, we eliminate one phase and move 350 or some odd thousand dollars to the bottom line of that facility's funds, so we'll have more money available for other really needed projects.
Okay, thank you. All good news. Roll call vote. Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, if I can, I just wanted to comment, the rest is for informational purposes, by the way, but on Items 3 and Items 4, both of these are paid from the FM and C Building Fund. This is a fund that we set aside on an annual basis, and we infuse with dollars to handle these type of projects and budget these type of projects. What typically happened in the past is we would bond for these type of projects, but we have been able to, I think, I know Andrew says it best, but the 10-year that feeds a five-year that feeds a one-year. There we go. We've been able to identify upcoming expenses and, and manage it and fix them as we go along, and so it's not a, it's not a head exploding type of a scenario of what do you mean we have to replace this? We know it's there, we know it's coming, we can manage it, we can pay for it, and I think it's a little bit easier to digest at that point, so. It's been a, it's been a good, good system in place, and hopefully for many years to come. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to Human Services Committee Report. We have just a few items. First, we have a couple of items on the consent agenda, and unless someone wants to pull something out separately, I will move the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call vote. Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, under Social Services, consider recommending the county board issue a request for information for group residential housing supplemental service rate beds and for group residential housing long-term homeless programs. And I would move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Under Community Health, we have three items. The first is to consider recommending the county board submit a maternal infant and early childhood home visiting grant application to the Minnesota Department of Health in the amount of up to $450,000 annually from January 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2019, and this is something that we have done for a number of years. The next item is to consider recommending the county board submit a Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge Grant Application for the time period from August 2016 through August 2018. This is information that we received through NACO, an opportunity that exists, and it very much is in line with some of the ship activities, and we have chosen the one activity primarily in the area of mental health, and thought that that may be a good opportunity, so asking for approval to submit for that. The next item is to consider recommending the county board apply for additional women, infants, and children, or WIC, funding for facility renovation in an estimated amount of $24,519 to be expended by September 30th, 2016. I will move Items 3, 4, and 5. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Community Corrections, consider recommending the county board enter into contract C-004996, a cooperative agreement renewal with the Centennial School District for use of educational space at the Juvenile Center in an amount of $158,313.70 per year. That is an increase. They are actually expanding the amount of space that's being utilized at that facility, and that would be from July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2020, and we appreciate the great partnership and the great working relationship that we have with the Centennial School District out there, so. I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have Resolution 2016 HS10, Economic Assistance Bills. I'll offer that resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have Resolution 2016 HS11, appointing privacy officials pursuant to the HIPAA guidelines, and I will offer that resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we will move on to the Property Records and Taxation Committee Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's four items for, for consideration, all of them rather different, but fairly straightforward. The first of them is a, consider for lot split. This is allowed by state statute. This is a home that has a little sliver of property that's in two school districts and like to merge it into one. We've seen these opportunities before, and we can...
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Secondly, this is a Resolution 2016 PRT-8. This is a small slivered parcel property that is now currently non-conservation. We're interested in conveying it, the property to the city of, of, I'm sorry, of Bethel. The purpose of doing a welcome to Bethel sign.
Okay, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer that.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, we had, had gauge in a repurchase agreement with an individual who was looking to hang on to that parcel property. They have not fulfilled their obligation either on the past taxes due or the current. I think we've had trouble even locating them. Under our rules and conditions, we seek to cancel the repurchase agreement for this parcel.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer that.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
And lastly, Madam Chair, this is a forfeiture that Anoka County did their long and difficult and tangled commonly, and we find that we did not give proper notification to all of the engaged parties in this parcel. We simply want to unwrap that and seek to cancel the forfeiture that we had done. We probably will renew it once again, but we'd like to cancel this parcel. For now, it's located in Lynwood.
Okay, and I will offer the resolution and just comment that we were unaware of a easement that existed on the property for a tower. And so, that easement had been sold, so when it was forfeited, the person who had the easement wasn't notified because we weren't aware of the easement. So, in order to rectify that situation, we're going back and canceling. So, kind of a complicated scenario. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
And that would conclude my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cordiac, now we'll move on to Public Safety Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items and then one additional item. The first is the committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2016-PS05, accepting dedicated donation from Paul Manier in the amount of $10,000 to support the Anoka County Sheriff's Office K-9 unit.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer that.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brassad, and I would just comment that I had the privilege of actually knowing his father-in-law, who is the reason for the dedication. My husband worked with him for a number of years, and Alvin was just an incredible investigator within the Roseville Police Department. So, I have a neat, neat dedication. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2016-PS06, County Board Authorization of Signatory for 2016 State of Minnesota Federal Boating Safety Patrol Supplemental Grant Agreement and approve entering into contract C-005025 with a total obligation of the state not to exceed $12,625 and an effective date of May 13th, 2016 through September 5th, 2016.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll make it.
Okay, resolution's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then, moving on to the Public Safety Committee Chair Report.
I would recommend the county board approve and execute contract C-005031, an equipment purchase agreement with IES for a phone hardware equipment refresh and ongoing maintenance contract with IES in the amount of $7,41,595.53. This includes hardware in the amount of $327,390.99 in ongoing maintenance for seven years. What this is for is we're in need of a hardware where ref- refresh and additional hardware to be ready to implement techs to 911 later this year. The funding for this project is going to be coming out of the E-911 funds and will not impact our budget.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
And Commissioner Schulte.
I will ask a rhetorical question, I think. I'm assuming this ties in directly with the PSDS and that whole system and that it's not in conflict with any other hardware or, and that there's probably even some interfaces between them. And I say that rhetorically because I'm sure there's no clear-cut response to that because it is a massive system with multitudes of interfaces which are still being worked on as we speak. I just want to make sure that, that this is also in conjunction with our IT department and PSDS, Public Safety System.
Commissioner Brassad.
Madam Chair, we do have Tim and Val here. Would either of you like to comment on, step up to the podium and comment on?
Yes. Are two separate systems?
Uh, Tim, I'm sorry. Could you please come up to the podium so that the audience can hear you? If you want to introduce yourself.
Tim Yanto, Deputy County Minister.
Thank you.
Answer to your question, Commissioner Schulte, is yes, they are two separate systems, but no, they will not be in conflict. They will work together.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Now, we will move on to a purchase of property insurance contract. Consider approving contract C-0005041, the purchase of property insurance from AIG through Arthur J. Gallagher in the amount of $174,687 for a one-year period ending June 1st, 2017. And this is a premium decrease of over $25,000, 3% lower, going back to, I think, prior to 2000. We actually had worked with a, a different carrier, the Chubb Group, and thanks to the great work of Bill Keller and continually trying to make sure that we're getting the best price out there, he was able to identify this opportunity. So, I appreciate all of your great work on that, Bill. And so, I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is to consider Resolution 2016-61 relating to the appointment of a library director as department head for Anoka County, and that is Maggie Snow. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll make that.
Okay, resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Here, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm just really excited that we're at this point. Maggie has been working as an intern, and it's just been really exciting to see that she likes this job, wants this position, and just her commitment and passion to what's happening in our libraries. Definitely some, some new eyes, and I think we are all gonna be excited for some changes that we, we will see.
And appreciate that staff are here as well to show their support and appreciate the great working relationship that all of you have with Maggie. And I think we'll go ahead and vote on this, and then I think I will ask Maggie to see if she wants to come up and say a few words. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. And then, we'll invite Maggie up, and then we have our contract after that. So, go ahead and invite you to come up.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Maggie Snow. I am very excited for this opportunity. Whether you use the library to grow your business or to grow your skills or to grow your children, we are a place of infinite possibilities. We are a place of transformation. We have a fabulous staff that I'm very excited to work with. So, I just wanted to reiterate, I appreciate the opportunity and thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. We look forward to working with you as you continue to look for new innovative ideas within, and programs within our library system. Okay, next, we'll consider approving the contract for Maggie, the employment agreement, and it would be effective May 24th, which is today. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I just wanted to make a couple, I guess we've got committee appointments is one last thing here we have on the agenda. On the other side, consider reappointing Warren Hoffman to the Coon Creek Watershed District and Anthony Wilder, a new appointment to the Coon Creek Watershed District effective May 27th, 2019. And the way that the process works is the communities within the watershed district are all asked to submit names. If a community submits a, what's considered a full list, that would be a list of three names, then by law, we are not allowed to appoint anyone else who resides within that community. So, for example, if the city of Coon Rapids gave us three names, we could not appoint anyone else who lives in the city of Coon Rapids. We would have to choose one of those names, or we could appoint someone who had been submitted on another list who lives in another city. So, lot of rules and regulations surrounding that, but wanted to make sure that people were aware of really how the process works. And appreciate the communities who have come forward and taken interest in submitting names for, for these appointments. And is there a motion to approve Items 12 A and B?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple of last comments here. I know that the legislative session has come to a conclusion, and we're still going through and taking a look at what the results are, but just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of so many of our legislators who really listened to what our issues were. And although in the end, the bonding bill was kind of held hostage for Southwest Light Rail and ended up going down in the, the last few minutes of the session, Anoka County, had that bonding bill passed, that would have been one of the biggest years ever for Anoka County. There was $22 million in that bonding bill for the bridge in Columbus, which is structurally and capacity deficient. We've talked a lot about that bridge. There was $32 million for Highway 10, which included adding a third lane from Hanson to Round Lake. And there was also planning money in there for the Highway 10 corridor. There was, I think, $11.9 and some odd dollars for the Hanson Railroad crossing that we've talked so much about. The city of Blaine actually was getting a little over $3 million for 150 Avenue and the plans that they had there. So, all total within Anoka County, that bill was well, it was like well over $66 to $70 million for Anoka County alone. And that is because of the hard work and effort of our legislators and frankly, to Kurt Dowd, who represents a part of this county, who certainly is the leader of, as the Speaker of the House, and recognized the importance of Highway 10, who, which for way too many years has frankly been ignored. So, appreciate the efforts, and we will see where things ultimately go. But, you know, I think it's important to acknowledge their hard work and effort. And before I turn it over to Commissioner Look, also wanted to acknowledge that Representative Tim Sanders, Senator Alice Johnson, and Senator Barb Goodwin are all retiring from the legislature. And certainly, there are times where we disagree with, with folks, and there are times that we agree with them, but at the end of the day, it is not an easy job, and we just want to acknowledge them for their service and, and really thank them because it truly is a commitment to serve in that capacity, and, and we want to thank them for that. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to also thank you and Commissioner Brassad and the other Commissioners. I know Commissioner Schulte's been down there too lobbying. We've made some changes in lobbying strategies here at Anoka County. We've gone out with some contract lobbyists. Very effective Ward Inus and Dave Johnson, very effective at what they do down at the legislature. And a combination of everything, I think, you know, that speaks to how well Anoka County did this year in the legislative session. And, and the bill, specific to the bill, I think that speaks to the state's responsibility on some of the roads, 65, Highway 10, that we have here, I-35W. And I just think that, as you had indicated, where, where energy has gone elsewhere in the past, I think there's a renewed passion by legislators to push, and push hard for the changes that need to happen here in Anoka County. And so, I think we're, you know, while, while the bill got scuttled in the last six minutes, I think, I think Anoka County did set, I, I know people are taking notice, and one of them I hope that's taking notice is Mendat, and that the legislature is, finds these roads and these projects important to invest a lot of energy in. So, kudos to all Commissioners and everyone down there that's lobbied and put in many long hours, did a great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to thank some of our staff that were key during this legislative session. Karen Skepper worked endless hours over at the Capitol, many, many hours. Doug Fisher, Cindy Caesar, you know, and others. But when we needed staff to testify on particular issues, they were there, and we're very grateful